Warrants, correspondence, digitalization of land records, oh boy. Warret Grant, Ponle landfill investigation, town hall update, public comment, and adjournment. And we have to add Christmas lights to the agenda, so that's going to be nine B. And we're going to move up Ponle landfill investigation up to five B under correspondence. With those changes, could I please entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes of October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Can I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed, none, the ayes have it. For warrants? Payroll warrant, ten twenty-two twenty-one, nine thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Payroll warrant, ten twenty-nine twenty-one, for nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. Could I entertain a motion for the payroll, please?
Moving, we approve payroll for the two dates listed.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye opposed, okay. Accounts payable for ten eighteen twenty-one, for twenty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and nine cents. Accounts payable for ten twenty-two twenty-one, fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. Accounts payable for ten twenty-six twenty-one, for twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Will we approve the warrant, accounts payable, with the date listed?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed, none, ayes have it. Just a reminder to everybody, they can go on to the town website and check out all the warrants. And for that, Megan, I'd like to open up for questions for accounts payable to the public, please. Anybody have their hand risen?
Hello, Jim Coe says, hey, I thought I expected tonight on a warrant, maybe a payment to the forensic auditor. So I just wanted to find out, is there a couple of invoices still outstanding that are possibly still in legal discussion? Thank you.
That's not under any of these accounts payable right now, so we'll take that under advisement, Jim, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I said, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you. All right. I, we all did that, right? Glad we guessed it for a second. Okay, moving on.
Why?
Why? Because I lost on the track of thought.
You had to expect it.
I know. Correspondence. I just wanted everybody to know that we get an update from the Dennington Sheriff's Department of all their calls that they do during their thirty hours per week. And so we're going to ask Tim to put this up on the website so people can see it, please. It lists like nine-one-one hangups and patrol stops and ATV incidents.
Which was one.
Which was one, correct.
For a month.
This is from, yep, one hundred and thirteen calls. So please put that up for me, Tim, thank you very much. And then, this is from Julie, she wants to remind everybody that November first for, let me make sure I got this right. The MAU bond vote, this is the special one that's coming up on Tuesday, November, it says second, but then down here she's got the first. What's the date? I want to make sure I have it right.
Believe it is the second.
It is November second, okay. Early voting can be done with her hours, Tuesday through Thursday, nine AM to four. I will not be open on the weekends prior to the election, however, I will be in the office on Monday, the first of November. If you wish to have a ballot mailed to you, you must request it by calling eight oh two eight two three zero one one six, extension one oh one. Or you can email me at thetownclerk@thetownofponle.org. Don't forget, the voting is from ten AM to seven PM on Tuesday, November second. Can we also put that up on the?
Already.
Thank you very much, Tim. And then we also received a letter from Megan Randall wanting us to send a letter or get involved in the rail. They're looking to maybe add a rail to Massachusetts from North Adams to Boston, and she thinks it would be a great opportunity for Ponle to maybe open up to this. I think it's interesting, and I would be interested in getting more information on it. Okay? This is the Massachusetts Passenger Rail Study. And that's it for correspondence.
What is Megan asking us to do?
She's asking us to endorse. But I think right now we need to get more information on it.
Actually, if I could.
Yeah, sure.
Time in on it. It's, she's actually not, I don't think she's asking us to.
It says I, oh, it's her, I'm sorry, she endorses it.
Yeah, I think she wants us to express interest. So that we can become part of the conversation.
Correct, yes.
For the Berkshire Spur.
Yes.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we're correctly paraphrasing what you did.
Okay.
Talking about the rail going into Albany, we only got one line to Ponle. I don't know, don't go around the circle, folks. Got to think about that before you get all endorsedy.
Well, then, I don't think anybody would, I don't.
I think it's just a study and to show that we would be interested in.
But I'm just explaining that so that people realize that that's where we stand.
Right.
I explained that to her at the meeting. But it didn't get very far, that's what I'm saying, it's, we only have one line, it's not passenger service. It's freight line.
It's freight line, yep.
Well, we used to have two.
Okay. So we're going to move up Ponle landfill now. So that's you, Mr. Tom Shuey.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hey, Megan, is Kurt there?
Yes, Kurt?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi Kurt, welcome.
How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
So, Tom, would you like me to take the lead here, or would you like to?
Yeah, go ahead, Kurt, I mean, you pretty much have it spelled out here in your emails, but, you know, there's a couple of things I want to. Did Sean Donovan ever get back to you guys with that third-party indemnity agreement from the state?
He has not, and there was, there wasn't any specific letter, so to speak, in terms of what the third-party indemnity was. And he was searching for that, so I guess he didn't find a letter per se of what the third-party indemnity would be. But he said he was willing and happy to speak with anybody at the Salem property to identify that the third-party indemnity is there. It really, I've had follow-up conversations. Tom, do you want me to kind of set the stage for what this conversation, what the purpose of this conversation is?
Yes. Dr. Shalman first was willing to let us do these PISO tests, which is only a few feet deep, you know, and they're just little, little things. Actually, you put them in with a hand board or something, don't they?
Yeah.
So, you know, these are not, you know, big things where you have to get a drill rig in or anything, you know, guys can walk in there, put them in, mark them, and then come back and test the waters, because they're shallow, they want to see what's going on, you know, the shallow water. And then he got, he got his attorney involved, and that put the screws everything, sorry to say, but, you know. But I think that if we can get to him with this, this third-party indemnity, he's afraid that if we find something that he's responsible, well, no. If you find something that's going to be based from stuff from us, you know, because I don't think that property ever had anything to do like what we had. So I think that we're really trying to get that, because these are less expensive wells, number one. And number two, it gives us a more complete picture of what's going on as far as the testing, to see how far things have spread and so forth. And that's going to, that's going to dictate to the state, basically, where our remediation is going to be. Whether it could be just something as simple as what he said one time, simple as, you know, just a trench with coconut shells or something in there, you know, just to keep it from off leaching off the property, you know, or something like that. But without the, without the information, we may not know, we may be able, we may be fortunate to do something a lot more expensive, is that correct?
Yeah, there are a couple of things you paraphrase there that I just want to clarify. In terms of the remediation, the most, if indeed there is a need for remediation in the context of you've got homes with impacted groundwater or drinking water that exceeds the applicable standard, the most cost-effective way would be to put a small treatment system at each home. You're not going to clean up an entire landfill or all the groundwater around it, so that's going to be the most cost-effective way. Now, in terms of what you identified with the trench, yes, that would be another approach to minimize the amount of the source migrating towards the homes. But it would be a little bit more than, than a coconut shell, you know, trench.
I mean, that was, that was kind of what they told me, what Sean told me, he said, could be something simple as that if we need it, you know.
I guess I just want to paint the picture very, very quickly again. So we've characterized the heck out of the landfill itself. We identified that there are impacts that are relatively high, particularly in the northwest of the property, that after the forested wetland and groundwater is migrating in that direction. So we had the Stroemeyer property, the Salem property, were the two kind of targets of where we need to extend this investigation. The state's not going to stop until we determine nature and extent, and being how far does it go? And so we haven't investigated off the property yet. We immediately after the last meeting, which I believe we were together in June, I went out, we went out and we contacted the property owners, some of which responded, some of which didn't, and it took a while. Then we eventually got approval for Stroemeyer, Salem gave them, us the verbal blessing, but we need to have an access agreement signed formally. You know, it's a, it's a legal binding document. We sent the access agreement, and that's when the attorneys got involved, the attorneys gone back and forth, and essentially at this point, Stroem, Salem hasn't given us authorization. Now, what we talked about with the state the last time was, what's the contingency? What's the backup plan if we can't get, get access to the Stroemeyer property? I'm sorry, the Salem property. And so we talked about potentially phasing this, this investigation. The most important thing here is, are the groundwater, the drinking water wells in the vicinity of this, this landfill, are they impacted? And the answer is yes, they're impacted, none of them exceed the applicable standard. So the point being is, over, you know, seasonally, groundwater rises and falls, and concentrations can go up and down. And just because we have one snapshot that says they're below twenty, but some are at eleven, some are at three, some are at twelve. The point being is, the state really wants another round of drinking water well samples, like ASAP. And the idea was we would combine it all together, but the reality is, if we don't have access to Salem, it probably doesn't make sense to combine all this together if we could get access later. And we're, we're up against, in terms of fieldwork, the weather. We can't very easily install pismeters by hand in frozen wetlands. So what I'm suggesting is focusing right now on getting the drinking water wells re-sampled and possibly doing a round of groundwater sampling. I'm going to propose you just wait on that. Put the new wells in on the rest of the perimeter properties in the spring, then get a big round of groundwater samples in the spring. One collective picture of, of this is what the current status of the contaminant plume is. There's no point, in my opinion, sampling groundwater in the fall to then only go back and sample eighty percent of the wells again in the spring. And I don't want to subject the town to that cost. So, but we do need to get the data for the drinking water wells, like yesterday. So, a lot of words, but that's the phased approach, and I have some other thoughts and suggestions, but if there are questions thus far, I'm happy to entertain them. And I have figures I can share, if it helps to look at figures, I can share my screen.
The lack of, for the lack of, of access, is that nonresponsiveness, or is it refusal? Do you know?
It's refusal. Essentially, the attorney said that they wanted to leave the door open to sue VHB, the company, if we identify that there's contamination on the property, or if, you know, God forbid, someone in the future were to go into the woods, trespasser, and slip on a monitoring well, or what have you. And so, basically, you know, that access agreement supplies us with some indemnity, and they're basically scratching that and saying, the door is open for us to sue you in any case, whenever we want, basically, and we're not, we can't have that. I mean, that's not, not our problem, the contamination might be there. So, you know, that's, that's really the sticky wicket. We've had multiple conversations with the attorneys, I've sort of left it up to the attorneys, but we're not willing to scratch the indemnity is the, is the point I'm trying to get at.
So, so that was more around a liability for accident and things like that? It was not about, about what the, what the test might yield?
No, it was both, sir. And the concern is, so they identify there's contamination on their property, and, and, you know, A, B, C, D equals probably the property value may be worth less if groundwater is contaminated on the property, and they want to be able to point a finger at someone and leave the door open to point a finger if indeed there's contamination on their property, and that finger would be VHB. And, you know, we're not, we're not going to open the door to be sued if we happen to sample water and there's contamination on their property.
Thanks, Kurt, I understand it much better now.
So, so Kurt, you're thinking of doing all the well testing in the spring, then?
Yeah, and that's a little different, Tom, than what we left it with Sean. I just started to run the numbers, though, and for us to do a full round of groundwater sampling for all the wells that are, we have there, plus a few pismeters that we may be able to stall in in November in the Stroemeyer property, you know, it's like twenty grand to then go back in the spring, put five, six, eight new wells in, then resample everything again. To me, it makes sense to just do it once, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to step up the bat with the state and say, look, you know, all right, we're sorry, we wish we could have had this round in when we said we would, you know, it's not our fault that we can't get access, we can't just sneak on the property and do it. So I think they'll buy it. But, but I don't think we can get away with waiting, you know, another season and not sample people's drinking water wells.
All right, now, I have a, you know, when I left the last meeting, I had to call Oscar from Stan Tech, you know. Well, he called me, like a quarter mile down the road, basically. And I met with him on that following Monday.
Yep.
And he's supposed to do these, the fall samplings, and he was going to do, we decided not to do the PFOAs.
Yep.
And so that kind of puts me in a little bit of a bind as far as our certification for that closed landfill. Because he's not doing the PFOAs. So if we do it in the spring, maybe you talk to Buzz or somebody, make sure that'd be okay.
That's, Tom, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, that's, that's sort of the biggest issue here, because you've got an obligation in that other landfill, and it doesn't make sense for both parties to sample the wells for the same thing twice.
Exactly.
And, and so, you know, just by the nature of the weather and this access thing, it's put us in a tough position, but I, you know, they, I think that they have to, they have to be able to be a little bit lenient in this situation. And, and I think between Sean and myself chatting with Buzz and saying, look, we guarantee this is happening in the spring, and, and just, you know, so.
As long as you get those two guys to agree with it and so forth, then I'm, I'll be fine with it, you know, as far as my certification. See, that's who I have to answer to anyhow.
I've worked with Buzz for a lot of years, he's a fairly pragmatic guy, and.
He's seemed like a great guy to work with.
Yeah, I, I think that he won't have an issue with it, given the circumstances, so.
Okay.
So from the technical perspective, does anybody have any other questions?
I don't.
I don't.
That pretty much covers everything. So, I do have one, one other thing I want to tell you, Kurt.
Sure.
I, you know, we're just looking at the, the drill locations on the, on the map that you guys had sent us. And the highway superintendent came over, and two of those are basically in the, in the gravel pit, so they're going to have to be changed. I mean, we're going to have to do some work with those.
If there's any opportunity for me to share my screen, I'm not sure if you're looking at a big TV or something, but.
Oh, is that a great big one?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be on the side, Kurt.
Perfect. Did everybody see this, okay?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not going to be looking at the screen, because I want to, but if I'm not looking at you, I apologize. So, these were the, these were the four we're talking about. We have the Brodor, I believe, is this property owner, and then the town, the town of Ponle owns this. And these were the two, Tom, that you were suggesting were.
Yes, yeah, I don't think we have a problem with Roger Boudreau, I don't think we have a problem there at all. But I think that what we're going to do is, the other ones are where we're taking, they're going to be taking out gravel and sand over the next, I don't know how many years. It's on a lease with Stroemiers. And Stroemiers are going, well, we know that we can't, that he can't sell the material to the town out of those areas. So, just, just letting you know that we're going to have to really figure out where these can go, we'll have to, we have to go with, probably have to go with maybe Sonny Stroemier and Joel Burington to do some placement on these things. We'd like to get them in, I mean, I don't think they have a problem with that, but we just don't want to screw up the gravel pit.
Absolutely, and they're too expensive to put in a place that they could potentially be damaged, so we have a lot of leeway here. I mean, just from the perspective, and I don't want to get this, you know, I don't want to make this too, too technical here, but there's a pretty, this is, this is something, this is called an esker, and it's basically a geologic feature that's, at one point, there was an underground river, essentially. And so there's really coarse material, and we're seeing the contaminant basically in bedrock moving along this. And if you look at, give me a second, my apologies. You look at these, oh.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I was all prepped, folks.
I got the wrong, there, this is the one, they all look the same when they're super small. So this esker feature zigzags right down through here. And so if you notice, the highest drinking water, although we're below twenty, the highest concentration is eleven, and it's right here. And so we also have detection here, and here, and down here. This S feature is basically where that esker is traveling. Nothing over here, slightly here, and then this, we think, is totally separate, because the concentrations are actually the highest in groundwater here in the overall groundwater flow directions to the northwest. So it's a really unique geologic, hydrogeologic relationship, where you've got this, like, subterranean river that goes S-shaped north-south with an overall groundwater flow direction to the northwest. And so the concern there is, you know, what is going on? This is only drinking water wells, what's going on in the, in the, in the groundwater up in this vicinity, the northeast? And similarly, northwest, why is this well up here, seven point one, and it's almost a quarter mile away? More than a quarter mile away. So this is what we need to kind of determine, to have the state get off our backs, and then figure, you know, and then, and then figure out how this thing's going to get cleaned up. Is that, was that a decent explanation? Does everybody understand?
Well, I think so.
Yep.
Here's all I said.
Yeah, and I, I could talk about this stuff all day, but I, I don't want to bore you too much. So in terms of the, the, the way this works, so this is with the CWSRF. There's a loan amount that you've already got established, and that loan amount included, because the last supplemental investigation, if you will, was supposed to be the last, and, and because there were, you know, there's exceedances at the, at the property line, it's not, unfortunately. So, but we built into that last loan agreement sort of the next steps. Evaluations of corrective action alternatives, which is a, you know, basically, option one, two, three, this is what you could do, these are the costs. We also put in the, some, some permitting and some compliance, which is the preliminary permitting that you need to actually install a remedial system. And then there was continued efforts with, with navigating, you know, being supportive to you and your, your, your town, and then navigating that CWSRF program as we were transitioning into the actual bid process of corrective action. The point I'm getting at is, there was about a fifty thousand dollar pot remaining on agreed-upon loan amount. I haven't spent it yet, but it's, it was there, because we didn't have, we didn't want to have to send it to underwriting over and over again. We just sort of proactively put it as a placeholder. I'm, because, because we will need to design another investigation and get underwriting happening again, and I really want to get out there now to get these drinking water wells sampled, what I'm trying to do is use some of that fifty for the drinking water samples, and not have to go through the underwriting process, so we can get out there yesterday. Now, over the winter, as we're teeing this thing up, there'll be the formal work plan of, this is the bigger picture, additional wells, bigger groundwater investigation, etc., where that plan will have to go through the CWFRS, CWSRF approval process, and the loan will need to be amended. So I'm just kind of forewarning you, that's the process. Fortunately, we have three months of frozen conditions to, to, to address it, but that's, that's kind of what I was, the direction I was going, and Tim, you, you know, is that, is that consistent with what your recollection was? During the call with the state and CWSRF, okay?
Any questions?
Any questions?
I don't.
So do we need a motion to allow him wait until spring? Is that what we want to do, or?
Yeah, but that's, I think, I think what we need to do is just follow his.
Follow his recommendation.
He's got this phased plan set up, and I think we need, I think that's what we really need to follow. I think he's got a good plan, and we're just going to have to go with it.
Okay. Is anyone having questions?
The one thing I just want to make sure is, I'm, I'm, there's, I'm not, the fifty grand, I'm not going to take the fifty grand. The point is, I'm reallocating a portion of the fifty grand that, that is going to be used for the drinking water sampling. And I guess that's the piece that I just want to make sure we're okay with. I will give the exact numbers to Tim and the team before, but I just hope this doesn't need to wait for another select board meeting for that approval.
I'll move that we allow Kurt to take whatever portion that he needs to do the drinking well samples as soon as possible, and put off the surface water until the spring.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you all. Any other questions come up, feel free to reach out, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kurt, have a good night.
Thanks, Kurt.
All right, Tom, are you good?
We're, we're stuck between knee rock and the hard place, and that's just the way it is. It's, you know, the state's making us do this stuff, and then it's just like more, we want more. We did it, we want more, we did that, and we want more, you know, as.
Hopefully, this is going to be the, the end of it, because, you know, it's not, it's not Kurt these guys doing it, it's, it's actually, it's the state forcing us to do it. So I just want you to make you aware that it's not the engineers that are.
No, no, we relate that.
It's their job, but, you know, and they're getting work out of it, but that's not their idea. They would really like to get this thing wrapped up, to tell you the truth. Then we, then we get to the remediation, and then we get what we have to do as far as any kind of certification, as far as testing and everything else. So, as long as he gets that cleared with Buzz, as far as the, the PFOA tests with wells, because we don't want to pay for that twice, because that's almost, they're each a hundred buck a pot.
Right.
You know, or more, and I don't think they're going down any. So, so if we're going to wait, do that, and we're still okay, so I'm not breaking a certification, you know? If they're okay with that, then I'm fine with it, you know? Because I'm the one that signed the certification stuff, I'm the one that's supposed to be following it.
Right.
You know, so that's what it is, folks.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, appreciate it.
Pardon? I appreciate the work on that.
Thank you. We, we've been trying, how about, Tim? We've been, we've been trying, but.
Many walks and many.
You folks have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Tom.
I just came up, I came up here right straight from the turkey dinner, the church dinner, working down there.
Moving on.
Well, I noticed you didn't bring any.
He's hungry, he was out hunting.
Thanks a lot, Tom. I'll remember that.
Please do.
I was going to buy you a coffee Saturday, but go, counting on that now. Have a good night, Tom.
You need a coffee, just stop by the, just stop by the transfer station, we grind our own beans, buddy.
Have a good night.
Good night, all.
All right, moving on to number six, digitalization. All right, moving on to number six, digitalization of land records. Tim?
Yes, yes, yes. So, we received a grant to get, get us up and running on the COT system in 2020. It wasn't, it was right before I arrived on the scene. So, um, Julie has been utilizing that. We've got her up and running. We trained her about a month and a half ago to really be setting things through and digitizing everything. Um, part of that grant was for five years' worth. So, now what we'd like to do is bring it up to the level that will really make it useful for anyone outside of Town Hall to really locate those digital formats of all the land records. And that's about a forty to fifty year time span. The ARPA bunnies allow us to do that. That's one area that can be, they can be targeted on very easily. So, what I had COTS do was come out and give us a quote on what it would take for that forty to fifty year period. And what they came back with was a quote to basically do it in phases. And the phase one is basically from, um, for thirty, thirty-three years back, about to the nineteen eighty-eight range. And then a phase two, which is prior to that, back to around nineteen sixty-nine, seventy. And the reason for the two phases is because the books in that phase two range have a lot more in them that makes the process a lot more manual. So, there were a lot more different artifacts. Yep, and a lot more artifacts put on a page and staples and tape and things that make it a lot more manually intensive. So, what they said was, we can do this first phase, um, and that, that's the contract that I sent for around ninety-six hundred dollars. And then while they're doing that phase, they can check out those books in more detail and come back with a more, um, accurate quote for the second phase. And so, we're not tied into anything past for that second phase. If we choose not to do it or limit the years we wanna, um, digitize, we can go that route. So, what I'm requesting is that we allocate from ARPA up to the amount of sixteen thousand and not to exceed sixteen thousand so that I, we don't have to come back and do this again when we get the phase two. If it's within that range, we can do phase two. Or you can choose just to do phase two now and have me come back. That's up to you all, how, how you see best fit. And the last piece of that is, is what I'm, um, proposing is if it's above sixteen thousand, we use the, the, what's in the restoration fund. So, you know, every recording, um, thing that comes through, four dollars goes to the restoration fund, which is four, and that's been in process for several years now. That's for digitate, digitalization and getting things online and things of that nature for the clerk's office. So, what this will do is get us up to that sort of where things need to be so people out in the world can just reach in digitally and get what they need, and then, um, we go from there.
So, my only question, Tim, um, and I'm totally for the whole project because, because the ARPA money is funding it.
Yes.
My only question is, at ninety-six hundred for phase one leaves us sixty-four hundred or seventy-four hundred, right?
Yep.
No, sixty-four, right? For sixteen, yeah, sixty-four hundred for phase two.
Yeah, yes.
Plus restoration money.
Yes.
Is that gonna be enough to?
Yep, so how I backed into the sixteen thousand was, so of the total books, there's a hundred and nine. So, the first phase is about fifty-nine percent. So, I just took that number, and that's fifty-nine percent of what? That's sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-six. So, I'm hoping that that quote will, what's left, will cover those forty-five books based on that. Now, I know they're gonna be a little more labor-intensive, but I'm hoping that, um, once we get in there and get an accurate quote, that it's not as bad as we think, or we just shrink the number of years. Where there's no reason we have to, you know, we have some wiggle room, I guess, is where I'm going with that.
Is the process, the process is scanning, isn't it?
Yes.
So, we're, we're scanning records and digitizing. That's how we're digitizing. So, we're getting a bunch of PDFs or pictures or something that we're then storing and making available.
Yes.
So, the ninety-six hundred in says, phase one, I would assume has a learning curve, and we might be more efficient with phase two?
So, we're not doing the work. So, COTS literally comes here and they're passing the learning curve. No, they come here and they set up and they do it.
Okay, yeah.
And that's, and that, my concern, Tim, is because, because I really like the idea of having it going back, you know, your, what you're proposing. And with the ARPA money, I'd rather have too much money
Okay.
proposed so that we can complete the project. And if we don't need X number of dollars that we propose now, we don't have to spend it there. If it was only sixteen thousand, let's say we went to twenty thousand. Just picking numbers, I'm just grabbing numbers. I, I haven't thought this through. I'm just grabbing numbers out of the air. If we propose twenty thousand tonight, and we only spent sixteen thousand, well, we got four grand, we can spend somewhere else on the ARPA money. I, I just, I just don't wanna limit ourselves. If we're doing it a one-and-done thing right now, I don't wanna limit what you're proposing, because I think the proposal to bring it back to that timeframe is, is really advantageous.
Okay.
And that's, and that's just my, that's just me. It's just my gut. I'd rather have too much money there than and be able to, and be able to, and be able to complete this whole entire process.
And I'm sorry, when was phase one gonna be done?
So, um, in November. So, that's the thing, this, this phase one contract has to be signed by the, by tomorrow so that they can schedule for November.
And so, and then phase two would start in December?
We don't know. So, while they're here for phase one, they would have figured out, and then we would get another one of these to sign, and then they would be able to schedule the date.
But we can always grab more ARPA money.
We could probably come back, I guess, Bob, right? I mean, we could.
I mean, if we, if, like you said, after phase one, well, we could be more accurate with the estimate on phase two, and it may or may not be enough, but then we can always come back and grab it.
True.
I don't wanna, I guess, uh, I, there's, that's the double-edged sword. Is it, I, 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 I see the point. I agree with the point that, um, you know, you, you don't wanna have to go back to the well, but we're the well, and we're right here.
Well, that's true. I, I just hate bringing the same thing up multiple times. Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather do a one-time deal right now and have, hopefully have enough money in there, you know, if, if we increased it. Because, because my line of thinking with that was ninety-six hundred does phase one, and especially after you gave us the percentages, you know, it's fifty-nine percent. So, then I'm thinking, even though it's more labor-intensive, and it's, now it's down to forty-one percent, ten grand's gonna cover it. So, it, you know, we're, twenty grand is, is gonna cover both, both processes. That's my line of thinking. Maybe I'm, you know, that, that's.
Well, I think, and there's no, there's no difference in the, in the efficiency of it, right? So, if, if we did do twenty thousand now, we would have money left over. Uh, the only thing I'm wary of is anytime you're, you're allocating more funds, they tend to get spent. And, um, and I'm not sure if that's true with this, with a project like this or not, but, but that's something to be wary of always with, with government. If, if it, if it, if we estimate that and allocate twenty thousand to a, a project, whatever the project is, it usually takes twenty thousand or twenty-two thousand.
Somebody's watching our board meeting. Yes, I understand what you're going, where you're going.
So, uh, yeah, and I'm not sure what, I'm, I'm not sure what the right approach is, because they're, both, both of those are valid points. Not have to go back to the well versus, uh.
Well, we kinda already said, well, we kinda already said here tonight that, you know, okay, we're comfortable with reallocating more money, so what's the difference? They're gonna say, oh, they're gonna real, so there's double, yeah. There's, there's a lot of stuff there. I, you know, that, that was my line of thinking. We'll one-time be done with it.
Why don't you make a motion, and then if there's a second, and it carries, if not, we'll go back to the drawing board.
I'll move that we, um, allot twenty thousand dollars ARPA funds to the digital, digitalization of land records in a two-phase project, phase one, to be started in November of twenty twenty-one for the estimated sum of ninety-six hundred. Is that right, Tim? And then, um, they'll come back with an estimate for phase two.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I think it's a, it, so the, the motion is up to twenty thousand.
Up to twenty thousand. That's right, sorry, Bob.
That's right.
No, absolutely, up to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to Vorak Grant. I hope I said that right.
Yes, so, um, Jen, Rebecca and I met earlier in this week, and we just wanted to get you guys up to speed on what we're doing. So, um, she mentioned last board meeting that we were picked thirty-nine out of a hundred submissions, which is a big deal.
Right.
And the grant, um, that is being sought is to allow access into the recreational, this, this Strobridge area.
Yep.
Am I saying that right? Okay. Um, so what we're doing is we're moving full force on the application, which is due at the end of November, I believe, and so we're meeting tomorrow. Rebecca, Jen and I in person to sit down and do a, a sort of, this is the things that we need to check off and do. Um, and we just wanted to bring it to your attention and let you know that we're moving forward with that application.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome. It's, it's awesome.
Really looking forward to the, the access to that area.
Yeah, some good, some good things. Um, all right.
Side by side.
All right, moving on to Town Hall update. And it's also you, Tim and Mike.
Um, so, like last meeting, we spoke of the budget. I sent you all an updated version of that. Where it looks now is that the project is gonna come in over around two hundred thousand. The good news in that two hundred thousand is that, um, it does not include the twenty-five thousand that were anticipated from the disney society. And, um, there's a twenty-five thousand contingency chunk in there, um, just to cover the unknowns. So, that brings it down to around a hundred and fifty at this point. And as we move forward, there may be a few other areas where we'll try to cut back, but, um, we think we've covered most of the other.
Tim, does this also include moving the building in the spring?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's out there.
Yep.
I spoke with Mike Connors on that, um, movement, and he's, um, his price is, um, in the spring is gonna be the same as what he's quoted, you know.
Guaranteeing the price.
He's guaranteeing that price that he gave us.
Nice.
So, that's not, that's not gonna increase that, that particular piece of it.
Okay, great.
You know, we had, the, the, on the surface, it looks like it was way, you know, way kinda out of whack in the real world. Um, we really worked incredibly hard. E- everybody worked incredibly hard to keep that increases to a bare minimum. Materials killed us. The concrete price skyrocketed. No, no control over that. There, there's just things that, you know, we had no control over. What I will say is that, um, the, the entire team, you, uh, still up, up to today, yesterday, day before, or whatever, they're still incredibly, they're, they're working with so much pride on the entire project. The, at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna have a really quality project for, for the money that's spent. That, and that's, I'm, I, it's, you know, I, I really believe that, the, the entire project, every, every part of it, um, that anybody's had anything to do with, the pride that they do it with, the, the, the communication between everybody has been phenomenal. So, um, you know, some people stepped in for me a couple of weeks ago and, and had to make some decisions and stuff and just did it without, you know, they, they, it just, and, and they, you know, they made, they made, they made the right choices, in my opinion, so, yeah.
I think it looks great. Coming along really nice.
I think at the end of the day, when we get it all said and done, and, and we can actually be in there and use it and do whatever, uh, you know, I think it's something that we're all gonna be proud of, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I agree totally. I mean, the, the building looks, looks fantastic. Um, uh, it, it walked through it during the, uh, during the picnic, which I know it's changed quite a bit since then. Um, and then, uh, I just say, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
It is.
And it's amazing how quickly, how quickly that's coming along. And, uh, I, I think the, the breakdown does tell us where all the overages are, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's a pretty solid, that's a pretty solid breakdown. There's no, it's, it's, well, it's extremely solid. It's, it's incredible.
Yeah, great job, Tim. Thank you. All right, moving on. Are we all set with that?
Yes.
Christmas lights, so that's you, Mr. Gardner.
So, I met with, um, Joyce and Rich Rider, um, a couple of days ago, um, here in the afternoon. My long-term planner, or the long-term plan, it's kinda my plan, I guess, um, is that big spruce tree needs to come down. It's a diseased tree. And long-term plan will be to plant another spruce tree or some, some sort of a fir tree there, um, but that's not gonna happen this year. So, Bennington Fire Department, uh, Rich Rider's been in contact with them. We'll bring their ladder truck down and put the lights back on that tree this year, um, at no cost to the town. So, I kinda gave Joyce, you know, the, the go-ahead, let's just get it done. I mean, it was a huge thing last year. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that, um, you know, we're gonna move forward with that again. I've reached out to the firehouse, the Pownell Firehouse. They need a place to string their lights out, check their lights, what, blah, blah, blah. They're gonna do it at the firehouse by the post office. I'm gonna reach out to Pownell Valley. I need a couple of volunteers to, um, get on the ladder truck with the, with, when they're down here and, and help them string some lights, so, um.
Do you know the date of that? Or not yet?
Uh.
I'll have that on Wednesday.
You'll have that on Wednesday?
Yeah. I, I don't think, I don't think we have set a date for stringing the lights. I know, I know that November third is the night that they're going to check the lights and see what they need, and Joyce, you know, she's gonna be there to, to take care of that. I've already secured the firehouse. I've secured, secured some, some help for her to do that. Just kind of an FYI, more than anything, you know, it was a huge thing last year, and I think it's something we should really continue. And I think next year, you know, we, we kinda wanna do it this year, but it's not gonna happen. Like I said, I think next year, we get that tree down, we get a nice tree in there, and we have a Christmas community lighting, whatever, whatever we do, you know, and, and try to have some kind of a festival or whatever, you know, over a weekend or whatever, so.
Yep.
Just kind of a thought in my head.
Sounds good. Thank you to the, which Bennington Fire Department is it, or all of them?
West.
Bennington Village.
Bennington Village?
Yeah, Rockin' Ladder Company.
Thank you for that. Okay, um, one last.
I thought that was, we had proposed there. Uh, maybe I'm thinking over my head, but I thought we proposed that they were gonna have projected lighting.
It was a suggestion, yes.
Which seems to me, there's no maintenance to that.
But they already have the lights and already paid for them last year, correct?
There's no.
Donations.
There was the donations on it, and I, I think, you know, um, you know, when I, when I talked to Dave Dentz about this particular tree in the spring, you know, I mean, me and the tree warden, Dave, Dave says this tree needs to come down. It has, he gave me the disease it has, and you know, and the only disease I know trees get it when a chainsaw hits the bottom of them, it's called girdling, but whatever, so. Or cutting them down. I don't, you know, I don't, I forgot what he told me, but anyways.
They're not gonna put another tree in that same place, are they?
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's a decision that the board would have to make, and I, you know, I think.
Decision that should be made because the well's right there.
Yeah.
So, then you're gonna have to trim it, keep trimming it all the time. You're gonna have to work on that someday, you know.
Right.
And not, that ain't nothing to do with me, but you have.
Right. No, I, you know, I, my, my, Dave and I, Dave and I talked about it, you know, in the spring, you know, a fourteen or a sixteen foot or some, some sort of a, you know, a fairly large tree, um, out there and then, and then be able to maintain it and keep it trimmed and, and take care of it. Some, at some place, you know, um, you know, around, around the center focal of the Town Hall, so.
I asked, did we pay anything last year to take them down?
No, it was all done by day volunteer. Yes, yep. And I appreciate everything that he did last year. It was a, it's a tough job. They had a hard time because it was very windy the day that they decided to do it, and it's a tall tree, and the ground is not even to be on the bucket truck and stuff. They did have a hard time.
And the lighting was a, was a really nice event.
It was.
That was great.
It was great, and so many people complimented and enjoyed it, so. It was great. And so many people complimented and enjoyed it. So yes. And one last thing before we open up the public comment is November dates.
Yes.
We're gonna change them to the first and the second week because the eleventh, which is our regular and.
First and third.
Oh, the first and third, correct?
Yes, the November fourth and November eighteenth.
Yes, we said the first.
The first week in the.
The first, I'm just saying our regular is the second. And the fourth, which was Veterans Day and Thanksgiving Day. So we're going to change both of them to November fourth and November eighteenth. And we will put that on the web, correct?
Yes.
Those will be our next two regular meetings.
Those will be our next two regular meetings. Yes. Does anybody have anything to add before we go to public comment?
I'm good.
Everybody's good. Okay, let's open up for public comment. Megan, please, if you have public comment, please raise your hand and remember to state your full name. Thank you very much.
Jim? Hello, everyone. First of all, I'd like to just thank Tim for putting on the spreadsheet for the town hall. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, but you didn't state your full name, Jim.
I'm sorry, Jim Kosis. I'm sorry, very, very, I apologize.
Thank you.
First of all, thank Tim. Tim, you're doing a great job, first of all. I just wanted to just kind of go over the spreadsheet that Tim did post on there. I did notice, or even in your discussion, there is the word overspending. And I think just, I want to just make sure there is a discussion on how is this overspending going to be handled? I understand, yes, we're at, according to the spreadsheet, two hundred and one, putting in monies from the historical society, which I really appreciate. And then the contingency hopefully will be, there won't be anything else added to it. I'd just like to know where the town is going to come up with the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take care of it. Is it going to be coming out of a general fund, taxes, increase, anything? I leave it up to you guys. Just kind of inform the people on that. Bottom line, it does show that the total budget is a hundred and one million ninety seven thousand. I was surprised we hit the one million. I'm not sure. There's lots of things in there. And I noticed that there were added things for dumpsters and things like that. Things that are going to come up, but we also have to be concerned about what the expenses are going to be going forward. I'm just a little worried or surprised that some of this might not have been brought up when the bond vote was initiated. I really wish the town would have gone maybe for more of a bond vote. I'm more than willing to pay a little more extra to make sure that this town hall will be a nice town hall that we can afford, but not to increase my taxes in one year. I would have liked to have spread it over a couple of years. So I'm not sure if it needs a discussion to have the overage brought back to the townspeople, explain to them that we have a nice building coming on, that we need a little more extra money. And if we could somehow spread that over the next twenty years or whatever bond vote is, but I just don't want to get hit by another one year tax increase because once the budget goes up, it never goes down. And I'd love to see something like that happen. Again, thank you very much. And I just throw that out for a suggestion. Have a great day.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else? Please raise your hand.
Mindy Jo?
Hi, Mindy Jo.
Hi, I'm Mindy Jo Harrington over here in Burdick Moe Home Park. How are you people tonight?
Good, thank you. And you?
I'm pretty good, actually. We've started some cleanup. We've started some junk removals, yard cleans. However, I really, really wish I could get Mike and Fred and Bob, all you down here, okay? So I can be on the same page with everybody else, especially Mike. I'd like him to come down and do his zoning thing. Because there's things I want to do down here and I want to make sure it's within the rules. Okay, I've got five things going on right now, opening up here probably next couple of months. I want to be able to clean them up and do it right. So is there a way we can get maybe just Fred and Mike down here to do the zoning thing? Please. I need help and I'm asking for help. I think I've come up with a way to get rid of lot six, okay, without it being a burden to the town. Okay, without the townspeople having to pay for it. But I still need, I still need input, please, like Mike and Fred coming down and walking through this park with me. I greatly appreciate it, Mr. Gardner.
Okay, so let me I guess now now is as good a time as any. So Fred and I met here last Friday, I believe it was last Friday morning. And kind of not even really, it had nothing to do with your part per se, Mindy Jo. It was just in general.
Oh, believe me, I understand that. There's some really bad stuff going on elsewhere.
So so Fred and I are working, me is in my capacity as a zoning administrator, Fred in his capacity as health officer. We've enlisted the help of Megan to do some research, start doing some research for us on what we can and can't do to clean up properties in town. So that being said, I'm sure that Fred would be willing. I know he's met with you because because your name did come up. I'm not going to lie. It was just in general. It came up because he said he's been working with you. Oh, you know, that's that's how it came up.
I'm really trying to clean this place up.
And that's exactly what he said. So we can, we can set up a meeting that's convenient for the three of us. I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all. I think it's probably a really good idea. You know, I do, I do know that Fred and I are working on, Megan has done some of the research already. She's, she's she did it this week and and she's got us. She's got us where we can formulate a plan. And you know, I I apologize to Tom Shuey right now. Tom was involved in this meeting. He kind of came through the door. We had, we were talking about him and he just popped in. So Tom, I apologize, but Tom was involved in that. Meeting was to not by invitation, he just came through. Because we think that, we think that people in town aren't necessarily aware of what they can and can't do with the transfer station, what the costs are at the transfer station versus or versus having a dumpster come in. We reached out to.
We have a dumpster coming in.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, we're, we're talking not just just about you, Mindy Jo. This is a conversation. Yeah, this is a conversation that Fred and I had.
I'm concerned what's going on here.
Right. No, I understand that.
The backside of lots, not one lot, you know, looking good. It's just I have certain things out with one lawyer and certain things out with another lawyer, okay, to to get things done that need to be done on that level. The other level I need to know is like the upgrades. Because some of these things in here are fixable, believe it or not. I was amazed, but they are. Okay, I'm working on those two now. Lot six is a problem. We got to get rid of that. So I think the best way to do that, because after taxes are done, the next thing to work on is to get that out of here. And we're going to end up having to pay somebody. You said fifty eight hundred was one of the, was the best. Oh, my goodness. I can't think of the words. Well, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your patience also. Was fifty eight hundred. So I was thinking maybe, because the wheels are under it, if we stuck everything inside of it, boarded it up, not that no metal, no wood, no, just the trash. And then maybe have somebody come and hook onto it and pull it to where it can be dismantled and taken care of properly. If that would be something that we could do because I believe it's going to be a little bit cheaper doing it that way. There's something, a suggestion, but I know the town, I need the town approval because it would be moving. You know what I'm saying? I think that's how I read it. I could have read it wrong. Sometimes I read things backwards.
Is that a state approval or?
No.
That would be a town.
I believe we've.
We, I don't think the town has to approve the removal of that trailer.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we don't. But Mindy Jo, I I think you you have my email address. You can either send it to the, to my select board email or the zoning. It doesn't matter. Send, send me an email of some times. If you want to, I'm sure you have Fred's. If we can.
I literally have an open schedule. So whatever you and Fred come up with, I will be there.
So.
About it unless I have a doctor's appointment, which I don't have.
So if you want to send an email requesting that meeting with Fred and I, then we'll come, we'll come up with a date when we can meet with you and come down and and do what we can do.
That would be greatly, greatly appreciated.
We need to double check with Ellen and Julie.
I'm not, I'm not going to get down there and talk about moving the trailer. That's. I'm going to do.
We can't do nothing with that trailer, okay, until the water lean is taken care of.
Okay, I'm just, I know there's other things, there's other factors there.
Fred and I are going down. I'm going down. I don't know. I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak for Fred. I'm going to get down as a zoning administrator. And I'm going to give her what she can and can't do. And that's all I'm going to do. And I'm not making a select board decision under zero circumstances. So.
I'm not asking for a decision.
That's all.
Okay. Wait a minute. Now you guys got me confused again, okay? Because last I knew, the only thing we had to take care of to get rid of lot six was the water lean. Because I actually contacted Mark Smith, I think his last name is, and I actually asked him to come get his building. Because if they got say over who can and cannot touch that, for whatever reason, that it belongs to them. So they could come pick it up. And I just see conversation I had with them. And then we had a fire down here.
We're just, we're getting into it.
Okay, Mindy Jo, your three minutes are up.
Now I just don't know about. So now I'm confused again. That's all. He just said there's other things.
Yeah. Mindy Jo, I'm sorry, but we have to move on. Send your request to Mike or Fred Miller and they'll come down and meet with you, okay? And we do appreciate that you're down there and you are trying to help clean it up. We appreciate that.
I'm just getting tired of running into what I feel like is titanium walls.
All right. Thank you very much. You have a good night, ma'am. Anybody else? Please raise your hand.
Jim?
I'm sorry to have to come back again. I just wanted, again, with Mindy, she's just trying so hard. And if someone could, if they, someone could just tell me how much the lean is on the water, I will be the first one to donate money to find out. I mean, to put towards this lean. And I hope that others in the town, because she is trying so hard. I, I, I just can't believe we're just fighting over some kind of a lean like this for her to help, get help to try to clean up this place down there. And this is the beginning of what needs to happen with so many properties that are happening in Powell. This town, Powell town was such a beautiful town and it's just kind of changing around because of things that like this that are happening that it's not the fault of the people that have homeowners around, homes that are around here. But it's just, I I just can't understand why this is happening now. So Mindy, give me a call. And find out for my, I'm not going to put my number on the air, but give me a call. I'll put in monies. I'll put towards anything that has to happen to help you out there. I'm not going to help out everyone else because Mindy has been trying. Others out there may not be trying to do what they need to do with their homes and stuff like that. There are, there is help out there for anyone. But this is unbelievable. I can't believe that I'm sitting here listening to this. Mike, I appreciate what you're going to do to maybe help her. And I hope Fred is able to help her. I just hope the town can help this lady and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Megan? Please raise your hand.
There's no one else.
Okay.
When do we adjourn?
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.